I'm gonna open the planning board meeting of Monday, September 23rd. So welcome people in the room and online. People should know we are gonna first take the hearing for the docks, but if you're, if you want to speak on matters concerning the special permit for self signaling, we have a letter from them asking to continue to our next meeting on October 15th. And so we will not be taking public comment on the special permit for self signaling tonight. And that's the couple times during meetings, so people can be mindful of their time. You're certainly welcome to stay. So the first item of business is just to say that we have in our packet correspondence from the city of Beverly, correspondence not related to special permits, from the city of Beverly, Gloucester, and the town of Wenham. Gil, were there any other correspondence not related to public, to the special permits?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, anybody else have any other, Mark, any other correspondence not related to special permits?
No.
Okay, great. At this time, we're gonna take a motion to continue the public hearing for Fox Infrastructure and Environmental LLC for both the Reed Park floating dock expansion and addendum and the Morse Fear Fisherman's Facility proposed floating docks and pier repair. Is that a motion?
Sarah, did you open the meeting?
I did open the meeting earlier.
You did.
Okay, so the motion to continue.
You didn't get a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think you have to, do you?
No.
No, okay. Sorry, I don't think we actually have to. Thank you.
Could I ask a reason for the continuous night?
The continuous of the self signaling public hearing?
No, the docks.
No, we're, we are continuing it from the prior meeting. We are opening the hearing now.
Okay, all right, I thought we were done here. Wait, 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 what happened? I'm sorry.
You're in the right place.
That would be too easy.
So I have a motion from Sue and a second from Laura, I think.
Sure.
Sue, roll call for that. Sue Filbrick?
Yes.
Here, Gordon Brewster?
Yes.
Chris Olney?
Yes.
Sarah Creighton votes yes. Peter Morton?
Yes.
Laura Tenney? Mary Foley?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, is there any new information from the applicant? Okay, and one of the things we did talk about last time was trying to make sure we capture public comment on hearings. So on this hearing, over the course of the hearings, we have received correspondence, email in favor of the docks from Ann Harrison, a collection of comments from the Harvard Committee and some fishermen in favor. I believe a comment from Lorraine Iavoni about expressing that no fueling should occur on the docks and an email from Dean Nahadis.
There's more, Sarah.
Okay, go ahead. What are the other ones for on the docks?
Yes, it's from the Chamber of Commerce. There were two separate letters and they were in a previous SharePoint folder.
Okay, thank you. So I'll open it up now to, we have some proposed conditions from drafted by Mark. But before we get to that, are there any additional public comments? And I will ask if Dean Nahadis wants to just speak, because he had a lengthy set of comments. Instead of me trying to paraphrase them, Dean, do you want to say anything?
Well, I did send in a letter stating some of the issues. The biggest ones being that there is no historical preservation or landscape architect on, you know, providing input. And just that there's no concise financial plan or overall management plan that we saw. And I was kind of expecting to hear back from someone, but I haven't. I'm not sure if this project's going forward or if it's gonna go back to be reevaluated.
Okay, thank you. I do think it is our policy not to respond with specifics of emails. So that's why we're now trying to make sure we acknowledge them in the permit process. Comments from the board or other public comments that people would like to make? I will say that I did pass these plans to the Chair of the Historic Commission some weeks ago, and she was gonna pass it to her commission. We've heard nothing from them. So we did request any comments from them, who or her. All right, hearing, no other comments. Let's, are people ready to talk through the special permit draft decisions? Okay, so let's start with the, I think in one by one now. Let's see, I first have the Reed Park one in front of me. Does that work for people? That's the first one we've done, let's do that one. Mark, do you want to just summarize for us the conditions or you want me to read them?
Well, most of the conditions are ones we discussed before having to do with lighting. Long discussion about the glare. So we required low-level dock-mounted lighting. And that it'll be in zones depending on, so that they can be shut down. Rafting the boats was a big concern. Boat watching was another concern as these are transient, not permanent dock slips that people are using on a regular basis. It was an issue related to trenching through Reed Park and any damage to the trees. So we have a requirement that the tree warden shall be present to minimize damage to tree roots along the path of the utility trench. The restoration of that disturbed area. Because of the concern about fuel docks and fuel spillage, a fuel dock shall not be installed at the facility. If it's feasible, additional seating areas, there's one there now kind of just off the backside of the dock should be provided, provided it does not obstruct the roots for dinghies to maneuver in and out of the facility. One section, this was a comment of one of the board members was concerned about place to pull out kayaks or canoes, paddle boats. So this is a new condition that we hadn't seen before. So it said one section of the backside of the float may be made available to put in or take out kayaks, canoes, or other similar paddle boats. So, and then commercial whale watching or fishing boats shall not utilize the floats to pick up or drop off passengers. And we have discussed that as well, so.
I would like just, on that one, just say pack up passengers for hire. You know, it's the, it's the, so right now it reads "commercial boats", so that, so I think it's the, it's the boats, it's people that are for hire.
Well, okay.
Commercial whale watching or fishing boats for hire shall not be allowed.
Yes.
Sarah?
So, I, I just wanted to say about the kayak put in, put out. We don't allow launching off those docks right now. It becomes hazardous if you have kayaks on there. It blocks access for the folks who have dinghies there. We do encourage people to use that little shingle beach right there at Reed Park and that's what folks typically do rather than come down on the docks.
Laura, that was your suggestion, right?
I don't know if that specific one was mine, but it was a concern of mine in the shingle beach. Depending on the tide and the currents, it's not all that accessible to a small paddler.
If it's high tide, then you do end up coming up into the park, which we do see if folks come in a high tide, they'll haul the boats up onto the grass right there at the wall.
So I think there's a, if I'm, there's the access from a kayak, not necessarily kayak storage on the docks.
Right, so, yeah, so if you were to come in by kayak now, we would certainly let you, and we do allow people to attach their kayaks like one of the dinghies in the back and to access the docks like any dinghy you would.
So it should be added, though it should be no, so you don't want people hauling it out and walking or leaving it out.
No launching or hauling from the dock, but certainly accessing the town, the harbor from the docks for their persons.
Okay, as Sue?
So there is a difference between paddle boats and paddle boards?
Yeah.
I think maybe it should just be paddle boards?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Paddle craft.
Paddle craft, yeah.
But the question is, is this a, if people are allowed to tie up a paddle craft or on the backside of dock in the way any rowboat would be, is this a, is this a, is this a special permit or is this a policy that we would, is this a policy consideration for the harbor master to make perhaps in how the docks get used? I'm seeing nods that it's a policy question. And it's gonna be plenty of dock. So I think it's, I think it's kind of an overkill, but I'm, either way it's fine. I mean, is anybody, is anybody gonna make a case to keep it in?
I think paddle craft on the back where you're talking about dinghies and stuff could just be.
It's a policy question, right?
It's a policy question, but don't we mention the dinghies in here? Maybe we don't.
Okay, I'm gonna.
We mentioned it, not in the conditions.
I see.
So we're gonna strike, strike that. Okay, other thing, I think Laura previously had asked during trenching through Reed Park, capital Reed, capital Park, the tree warden should be present. And I believe you had a land, an arborist or you had another professional dinghy?
Yeah, I had independent arborist and someone countered with having the tree warden there. I think that it's a very modest additional constraint to ask for an independent arborist to protect the town's trees. So I would advocate for that.
So you're asking that that be a?
I'm asking.
Yeah, okay. Anybody, any objections to that addition?
Well, I, I mean, personally, I would like the condition to be that it does not remove any trees.
Didn't, shouldn't impact the tree, yeah.
Right.
So I just want that clear on the conditions of that it's.
Why don't we add trees?
To minimize damage.
To get a point, yeah.
I would say do not remove any.
Eliminate?
Eliminate damage. So that's a tall order, but or prevent damage.
Why don't we start with the tree, the certified arborist that being a town project, reusable project, is an additional cost of the town during construction. The trenching is designed to avoid impacts of both trees and having a tree warden on site. Nate can probably speak to this a little better than me, but I think, I believe that has been allowed and successful on other projects.
Yeah, correct. I mean, that's the intent of having, you know, town tree warden at our disposal is to, you know, utilize them in these types of situations. And, you know, I think he is looking out for the best of town trees and, you know, I think, I think minimizing is the correct verbiage there. I think, you know, he will use his, you know, tree warden judgment and I think he's been doing it for 50-plus years, you know, to verify that we do not, or the contractor does not cut any roots and, you know, allow the utility to be placed, you know, without harming the trees.
I have a lot of respect for Nate's opinion, so I just, I think that what might happen is that sometimes you want an arborist there to airspade or to cut roots so that there's not tearing done to the roots and inadvertent damage. So that could be at the tree warden's discretion. But I think if it is an additional cost to the town, I think the trees are quite a valuable asset to the town and so we want to really balance the protection of the trees as a town, town living infrastructure.
So are you suggesting an "and" independent arborist or an "or"?
I am suggesting the, well, I mean, I guess I'm saying that the tree warden can call it an independent arborist, but I'm not, I'm not requiring it. But I think that that is often required when you're putting utility trenches near trees is to have that be part of the process. You know, I don't want to prescribe means and methods, but I think the utmost care needs to be taken with that critical root zone of the trees.
No, I think that's smart. I think handling that way would allow us to put like build an alternate in the package to basically allow, you know, allow the contractor to carry costs for the arborist if necessary. So with that, that were the discretion of the tree warden.
Yeah, I think we could add something to the effect of like, if the tree warden needs it necessary, do you have an arborist to airspade or other method as directed by the tree warden? I think that, I would be okay with that.
I'm okay with that too, Nate.
Okay, can we just get some final language here? During trenching through Reed Park, the tree warden may require, may require support from an independent arborist. That is discretion.
That is discretion to, to.
To prevent or?
Prevent, to, to prevent damage to the critical root zone. Or to the tree root zone.
Okay. Okay, great.
Thank you. Thanks, Nate.
The other issue was a fuel dock shall not be installed at the facility. I think we actually talked about no fueling shall be done at these docks. I do think that's two different things. The proposed wording is no, a fuel dock shall not be installed at the facility and I agree with that. No fueling, the problem with that is that's like a gas can of somebody with an outboard, right? So that's probably hard to enforce.
We don't actually see, see people fueling their boats down there. I will say occasionally, some of the owners of dinghies that have the self-contained fuel tank on top, I observed on one or two occasions, folks popping that off. But we can certainly put out a directive telling the people.
Sarah?
Yeah. On that same point, I wonder if we could strike the caveat unless no fuel, unless fuel is not available at any other facility. I think there's enough concern about fueling that we could just say a fuel dock shall not be installed at the facility, period.
I think the latest version has that.
Oh, it does? Okay, this is what I had on Friday. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so people are comfortable with that as is? Okay. Any other comments? The other comment that we just heard, oh, go ahead, Mary.
For clarity, one and two, so one says low-level dock-mounted lighting. And then two says lighting shall be constructed in zones and shut off, so then which be off?
End of question.
Shut off areas where not required. Is that all one in the same? Are we only installing the, the low-level dock-mounted lighting?
So what will happen is when we buy these posts, the virtue, we all have lights, which we will be making sure there's no bulbs in them. And then we'll have the smaller deck-level lights appropriately spaced to make sure it's safe to transit without tripping. Probably mostly it transitions in floats.
But are they all one in the same? Is it all the same lighting?
No, no. So the light on the posts shines down from a couple of feet above the deck. Shines down onto the deck. The little, little.
Flush mounts.
Ones, flush mounts, they're, imagine something a little bit bigger than my hand, with two little lights that shine out and down onto the dock. So they're at foot level. Those lights are at foot level.
So which ones will be shut off when not used?
The ones on the posts will be off all the time. That, you wouldn't have both. Now, remember, we had the discussion about maybe they're motion-sensitive or on a timer, that sort of thing. But the discussion moved towards having the flush-mounted lighting instead of the lights coming out of the post. So a light on the post, never on, a little flush-mounted, I think would probably be.
So the question that Mary, I think, is asking is the second proposed condition is lighting shall be constructed in zones and shut off areas where not, and shut off in, in areas when not required. So I think we had talked about having them be off.
We talked about that one. We're talking about the full mounted.
Posts, yeah.
Because there would be more glare with the post-mounted lights. And so the question is, do you need the second condition if you're just doing the flush mounts?
So maybe the second condition is there will be no, that there will be no higher lighting than the flush mounts?
The post-mounted won't, will not be on.
You're right.
I think number, the first condition needs the word "only", first. Only low-level mounted, because otherwise it says that it's only on the docks. So if you change the word to only flush, only low-level mounted lighting or flush-mounted lighting, it shall be installed to light the floating docks, period.
Okay.
And then the rest of it becomes, but it does mean that these docks in January will potentially, if they're solar or something, they might have them.
I would think that, so the HAC actually brought this up at the last meeting because there are private floats with lights. And there's going to be a time of year restriction. When the voting season is over, there'll be no lights on the docks.
So again, that's, is that a policy question or is that a, it is a aesthetic question? So, how do we?
May I ask you another question about, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was gonna say it's not strictly aesthetic, it's a safety question. If the docks are out there and accessible year-round, then they should be lit.
So as far as year-round goes, we're not going to be operating in the second season, which is a lot of things. That is likely we will keep the harbor master boat since we're going to have to start keeping the boat year-round. So there may be a single light down by the harbor master boat. But there would be no need to light the rest of the dock. There won't be access to it. We'll take that as section.
So you physically couldn't walk on the docks at that point?
It is also very un, there are many dock, many, many, many docks that are not, I mean, it's not a customary thing for all docks to be lit at night.
There's usually some kind of light down there, isn't there? But anyhow, it sounds like it's addressed through the.
So can I just?
During the voting season, yes, there's no need to have lights during the off-season.
Can we just strike lights, shall be constructed in zones, and just lighting shall be shut off in off-season? That sort of leaves it to the, does that make sense? Do I do think that the?
You have to define off-season.
Well, I don't think so. I think that, that the har, if the harbor is gonna take up these other.
Right now, it's November 1st. So on November 1st, I'll be detaching a section of floats where people can't come in and land and come ashore.
Yeah.
Basically from the base of the ramp. So there'd be no need to have lights for, hopefully there'll be no overnight trains and boaters starting to run.
Okay.
That's, right now, that's in the works.
How about lighting shall be shut off when floats are not utilized or?
Or in off-season, I think.
Or, well, I wanna, well, because he's still gonna have lights on the floats that they're gonna keep year-round for the, for their boats, so. Right, so.
For the public safety of one, is all we'll need.
So lights shall be shut off on floats which are removed for the season, let's say.
Okay. All right, any other comments on the conditions? Mary, Mary?
Is it on the safety?
No, I, I like what Mary brought about the lights. I had a particular question here about, I know we talked early on about what those things would look like. Would they be utility poles? Did it have power in it? Does it have water in it? Do they have lighting in it at one time? And then it'd kind of devolve. And what would the, what would the spacing with the lighting be and the posts that you're talking about?
Well, so I was envisioning five posts.
Five posts, the whole way?
Yeah.
Lights, one house?
Yep, with water and electricity. They'll have lights in them, but the bulbs will be removed because that's not going to be our lighting.
This is like a four-by-four?
Yeah, it's, well, there's round ones, there's, but all of them are designed so the light shines, you know, but that, that would be.
They have, they have lighting integral to the posts.
Right, it would be more light than the foot-level lighting that's what we're moving toward here. So I think the lighting needs to be spaced appropriately. I don't know what that looks like yet.
Fifty feet apart, so.
So every two, every two floats.
Every two floats?
Yep, the floats are fifty feet apart.
They'll be a vertical post with utilities.
No, 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 no. So that would be, hang on a second, I'm tired. If there's five posts, there'd be one post about every four floats.
One post, every four floats.
And the actual dock-level lighting would be how much spacing on that?
So I was thinking every fifty feet, every two floats.
One light is a good to be.
Reading lights.
Oh, okay, so they're, they're not meant to be wayfinding so much as they're just a little bit of light up in there, okay.
Yeah, we're not gonna have a runway landing strip there.
Mary?
So the way I read number 10, it says, "Commercial whale watch or fishing boat shall not utilize the floats to pick up or drop off passengers." So are we allowing commercial whale watch boats to dock?
The Reed Park docks are partially funded by a federal grant. It is crystal clear that commercial use of the docks is not permitted.
Why don't we just say that?
Why don't we just say that?
It's, it's crystal clear in the grant. You know, I've, I've chased people out of there. I've had a couple of tour boats come down from other towns and try to pick up and drop off and.
Well, yeah, and I want it to be clear. So let's just say no commercial use of these docks, right?
Part of the federal.
Or however you just said.
U.S. Fish and Wildlife grant.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? I know that some of the fingers are designed for commercial fishermen. The lobster, oh, that's not.
That's not Reed Park.
Reed Park, that's Morse, okay. I take it back.
Thank you. Okay, and any other comments on the issues?
With other parts of the document?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna, I'm actually working backwards, which is not logical, but, okay. So then are there any comments on the findings that are described here, number one through nine? Those findings are the application, the components with Section 6.3. The proposal meets a community need by allowing the expanded use of Reed Park docks by public and provides economic benefits to the town, Town Manchester. There's no change in traffic flow or parking requirements. Existing utilities and other public services are adequate to serve the facility. Neighborhood character will not change. There's no changes to either Reed Park or Mascanoma Park. The existing facility will serve the same types of boats as the existing floats under the same rules. Harbor views will be maintained as the use of Reed Park and Mascanoma Park will be improved through the connection of the respective floating docks. Public will have access to the floats to further explore the harbor and its environment. Impacts to the natural environment are minimized with the use of piling systems that have anchors. The construction of this type of float structure allows it to be resilient to storms and modified as necessary to adjust its rising sea level. And there's no additional impact to town services. The facility is projected to have a positive cash flow which will help support harbor infrastructure. Comments on, on those?
Just a typo?
Did you want to go first?
Oh, just a typo, just number six. It should be as the use of Reed Park, not the Reed Park.
The use of, yeah, thank you. I'm missing a couple periods at the end of sentences. Laura?
Number seven, impacts to the natural environment are minimized. And we're talking about the use of the anchoring system. I know that the letter writer referred to shellfish habitat, and I think that's in the jurisdiction of, um, theirs, like Concom and so forth. But I wonder if it would be, either we're referring to those, um, decisions in here explicitly in terms of the protection of the natural environment, or we add a clause to that that says, you know, shellfish habitat and other environmental impacts are being avoided.
Maybe we can get both engineering to comment on that?
Yeah.
Jeremy? The, did you hear the question, the impacts to nat, the natural environment?
Aside from just the anchoring, but you know, the shadowing and the, anything to do with habitat?
Um, no, aside the shellfish.
Thank you, pardon?
The question was if anchoring has anything to do with natural habitat? I'm sorry, you were.
Yeah, any impact, aside from the anchoring method, are there any impacts to the, um, natural ecology? And if so, you know, how is the dock being, how are you mitigating those?
Yeah, so we're mitigating those through offload clearance, um, and, uh, we're working that through the DEP now. Um, but, yeah, there are no direct impacts to, uh, the subjects beyond the EPOS.
Okay, and we will reference in the document, I think, order of conditions and the Concom. Is that in there?
Yeah. I wish that, make that a condition.
Yeah.
Apply with DEP and, and Concom.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Concom, Concom, I want to know those same lines. This is why I missed the question, I was talking to Fiona on the side about this. Uh, on, on one of the special conditions where we talked about the additional seating areas, uh, we were going to ask that we just add additional public seating areas. So, just having more public there in the beginning. Uh, understanding the whole facility is, is, the whole project is about, is about public access to the waterfront anyway. Um, but we would just like that, uh, that word in there to help us when we go, uh, talk to DEP in case we need any additional, uh, square footage to accommodate those seating and, uh, all boats on the floats.
Any objections to that?
So, I'm just, I'm just.
Okay.
Should not.
Great. Um, good suggestion, thank you. Um, any other comments on the, on the findings section? Okay, um, other comments on the, the other, um, the rest of the document for Reed Park? Mary?
Do you want all corrections now?
Sure.
So.
There's just tables, you know.
What, what are you, um?
So, what I've mentioned before and they've never gotten corrected, so I'm thinking maybe there's.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I'll just start at the top. So, our zip code is zero one nine four four. Um, and then this says pursuant to section four point one, one J. It's, the correct section is four point two point F one. Um, I wanted to clarify in paragraph two, it said, "Site improvements at zero Reed Park," are the, is that the floating docks?
Is that the ad, the correct address?
But are we putting zero Reed Park because of the docks? I mean, I'm sorry, because of the walkway or because that's?
That's the address of the park, of the parcel. Yeah, Reed Park doesn't really have an address in the G I F database.
So, I'm just wondering why, so we don't put an address for Morse Pier, but you're putting and associated site improvements? So, what are those other improvements?
Isn't it the Reed Park utilities through the park?
Yeah, it's all, all the work. So, generally, I put that language because there's sometimes other things, like running the utilities through, um, an area or an adjacent property or down the street. So, there are site improvements related to the site, so.
Okay, so it's just, it's not.
So, it just kind of covers everything that's shown on the drawings that's approved.
So, for this one, it would just be the trenching?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the, um, the last page. The, after the condition, the second paragraph after the conditions, it says, "Where applicable, these conditions shall be complied with prior to the planning board." So, that sentence needs reworking. Um, the paragraph after that references section twelve point eight point seven. We don't have a, section twelve point eight point seven. So, I don't know if you're referencing the special permit section. I'm not sure what you're referencing.
Okay.
The last paragraph says that this is for text point.
It's twelve point eight point six is decisions.
Um, the last paragraph is referencing text point on this. And I wasn't sure why special permit was in quotes.
So, it should be a Reed Park.
I think that's it.
And, um, you said it was, I was gonna, uh, to four, four, four point two F.
Four point two point F point one is the, uh, use tables?
Six two. For those fascinated by this matters, including construction, alteration of structure within need high water.
It is.
So, four point two point F one. Mark, you got that or?
What?
Four point two.
Yep.
Point F.
Point one.
One, number one, okay.
So, do we?
I just wanna go back to the appeals because there is a section twelve point eight point seven. It's just not highlighted if you go through the book.
Turn on the next page, it's just not highlighted.
Yeah, so you might have missed it.
The number is there, but it looks, you can't see it.
And it addresses appeals. It says, "Appeals of planning or decision in this section shall be made to."
It's not bolded.
It's not bolded.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, is that the right section?
Yes, that's the appeals.
Yes, that is right, you're right. Thank you.
Um, so, with our special permits and site plan, don't we usually reference that this were applying under six point three, twelve point five, twelve point six? Don't we usually reference that?
I think we do with the, um, but he referenced, I, I had that same comment, but then he references it in the, um, in the letter, so I thought it was fine. It is in here.
Is there a separate letter?
No, from Morse Pier. It's number one under the findings. The application is generally in accordance with section six point three.
So, we don't reference the twelve point five and twelve point six?
And.
It's just a, well, that.
Twelve point five two is the press, is the. Twelve point five two is crit, special parent criteria. And that, and, and twelve point five two references the number one standard set forth in six point three. So, it's a little bit circular, but.
It's in there.
Okay. Um, so, I'm gonna take a, uh, motion to close the, uh, public hearing and then a, um, motion to, um, approve our, this, these draft conditions. I think we'll wanna get a final, um, at our next meeting for a final vote. Does that make sense, Mark?
Um, Kim, I would certainly close the hearing tonight.
Close the hea, what?
I would certainly close the hearing.
So, close the hearing for the special permit, um, for, uh, for Reed Park. Um, I'll take a motion to do that.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Um, any, any discussion? Um, okay, uh, roll call vote, Mary Foley?
To close?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Laura?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes.
Yes.
Gordon and Sue Felberts.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, I'll take a motion to, uh, we, what, should we just vote it, it's final language next time? Or you?
You can vote it now, these are just little edit things and you better.
So, we'll take a motion to, um, approve the special permit and site plan approval, uh, for Reed Park as amended, um, tonight. Um, and, uh, um, we'll take a motion to that effect.
So, I have a question.
We'll take the motion first, please.
Well, I can, I don't think I can make the motion.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, ask the question.
Uh, so, I was not at the last public hearing. I did watch the video of it.
Okay.
Is there some form?
To fill a form with a, no, no.
So, does that happen before?
No, actually, you weren't here and then we didn't, um, take, take it up last time. We did not, we extend, you're good, I already thought of this.
Continue the hearing without any discussion.
Well, I move that we approve.
I thought of this on the way in, I wanted to throw my head between the two of you. Uh, okay.
So, I, I move that we approve the Reed Park improvements as a.
The special permit and site plan approval as granted to the Town of Manchester. That's what I thought you said.
Thank you for that.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Um, all in favor, I don't know, do I need a roll call? Yes, um, I'll say, I'll start. Sarah votes yes, Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Gordon, um, Sue? Uh, Peter?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mary?
Um, because of the reasons I've cited before, no harbor management plan, no financial analysis, um, no visual renderings for Reed Park, I abstain.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, let's, uh, move to the Morse Pier, um, conditions, we'll take them, um, in the same, uh, order. Um, uh, here we have, um, the following conditions. Um, I'm gonna read where that only low level dock men, mounted, um, lighting shall be installed to light the floating docks and the docks shall, and lighting shall be, uh, shut off, in the off season or whatever the language is.
Can those float stay in or give the lobster, pull their boats?
Their season is a little bit different.
So.
They, there are more restrictions now at the state federal level. So, they actually, this year, didn't start fishing until in the May. But when the docks go back into service in the spring at Reed Park, we put the lights in.
Okay.
I would say, once we open it up for people to walk, we should have the lights.
So, the lights should be shut off in, um, the off season or consistent harbor policies. And there should be no rafting of boats at the facility, a fuel dock shall not be installed at the facility. Um, commercial whale offer fishing boats, and I suggested for hire, shall not use the floats to pick up or drop off passengers. Are the five conditions that we've spoken of there.
Is there not the same requirement in the grant for commercial?
So, that, that section of the dock is not funded by the federal grants. So, there is not that same restriction. However, those floats are intended for use of, uh, in spots would be assigned to Manchester lobster. So, there's no intention to invite or allow, um, the recreational sport fishing that this specifically addresses. As a matter of fact, we already have that in the laws and regulations, as far as identifying what constitutes fishing, so.
I guess my, I, that was something, something I had suggested in the, my concern is that one of our, um, special permit areas is parking and traffic. And so, if you have, now have people coming to use this dock facility to take, um, a whale watch or a deep sea fishing boat out, then, then now we have all kinds of parking issues when the intent is something else. So, that was, that was my rationale on, on that.
So, why wouldn't we just say, um, only used for Manchester by the sea licensed fishermen? If that's the intent of this dock?
So, uh, I, I think license, I, I think it would be better to put in a specific restriction. No sport, uh, whale watching, uh, fishing, no boarding of passengers. That, that really covers it right there. No, no passengers, so.
But this is for Manchester fishermen, correct?
Right. I mean, you could, you could.
So, why wouldn't we?
You could put it either way or both ways, whatever way you want. But if you specifically stay. No, you're fine, you're fine.
Sorry.
They'd rather not look at the point anyway.
National fisherman.
Yeah.
Manchester licensed, yeah.
Yeah, either way, I, I'm, whatever your pleasure on this.
Manchester doesn't license fishermen, so it's not a.
No, we don't, it's state.
So, just, or state licensed?
Well, except that I think that this dock, it could have, we also talked about having this be available to, um, commercial uses that are in service of the harbor, you know, mooring facility, mooring boats. You know, there are lots of commercial uses of things that are, I mean, there are some commercial uses, I guess, that are not.
Like Manchester Mooring Service Company.
Right, or another mooring service company.
I think, uh, either or.
It's not a commercial business, though, is it?
Yes.
Manchester Mooring, absolutely.
It's just a commercial license, yeah. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna stop for one second to let people know that we are not taking public comment for cell signaling tonight. We will take, maybe you're gonna talk about Mill Street, but, um, but it, it, just so people know, so we can take advantage, respect your time. So, uh, back to, uh, Mark, you had something?
I was just gonna say, all the various things, I mean, it would be covered by the condition anyways that we have in here. Concerns, right.
Yes, my concern is covered.
And even everybody else's, I mean, the way this is worded, commercial whale watch or fishing boats for hire shall not utilize. So, that would allow the, the mooring, um, to be able to tie up and use it, you know, early in the season and, you know, to get in and out and, you know, and, and, but what everyone's concerned is, is passengers and the people coming to get a ride, so, parking all day, so.
Right.
So, I think this language.
There are other, I'll maybe give you another example, Mary, of another commercial use that might, at the harbor master's discretion, be using this, and that is a, um, like a seato boat that serves, it's like a towing service that.
It's a triple A.
A triple A kind of thing that is, you know, there's one captain or, and one staff. It's not a tran, it's not a passenger transport, but it can be very, if, let's say there's no seato in Beverly anymore or wherever it is.
Correct.
Then maybe it's, it's an important, uh, boater service that might use a commercial dock at the harbor master's discretion. It's a commercial kind of thing, rather, that's not fishermen.
And they currently do that?
No, I don't think we currently do, but I'm just giving you an example. If we limit it just to fishermen, we potentially narrow our availability of commercial uses that service a range of, of boating needs.
So, why wouldn't we just do what we currently have now? I mean, why is anything changing if it's just expanding the fishermen docks?
Fishermen's, if I can.
Because right now, there is no special permit.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Condition for that, that's their own rules. So, we can strike number five, but if you wanna have a condition related to it, um, I think the way we worded it for the other facility, and this, this wording also applies to, um, what everyone's concerned is, is passengers parking their cars all day while they go out in a boat and not being, going out in their own boat, being out in commercial boats. So, I think, um, I think the language here is fine. It allows buy-in, some flexibility for other types of commercial uses and, um, and but restricts what everyone's concern is.
Can I ask another question?
Laura, go ahead.
To passengers. So I think the harbor, through you buy-in, I think, already offers real small-scale kind of harbor tours? Right? You want them to be able to continue.
Right, the launch service.
Yeah.
The people come down and want to get on the launch.
Right.
And go. We also use it for the red line and breakfast.
Yeah. So that's a nice service for, that accommodates the public in kind of a small-scale way and people who don't have boats of their own. So I think we just want to make sure not to preclude that use.
Yeah.
Is that on Morse? Is that on Morse?
No.
No, I don't think it is. But we have the same clause on Reed, so... So long as we're not, that was my only concern. I understand the intent of, you know, not whale.
The type of lunch was half on, half off.
Are we... Okay, any objections on that, to leave it as is? Okay. Laura, go ahead.
Sorry, I had a comment on the findings, which was somewhat important.
Okay, now let's finish the conditions first. Any other conditions? Okay, let's ju...
I'm sorry, should we add the DEP and the CONCOM on this one as well?
Ah, yes.
I was going to do that in the findings.
Yep, let's add the DEP and the CONCOM.
So DEP is chapter 91 and CONCOM is local, right? And that's the finding, we would add that finding that they would comply with both.
I think we had them as conditions before.
I thought we put it in the findings, but either way.
Yeah.
Whatever it belongs.
I think it belongs in the conditions. Okay, findings.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you just add the only to number one like we did in the last one?
Yes. Okay, and then the special permit criteria. Just looking to see if there is anything different than what was before. I think they are the same. Are they the same, Mark?
Similar. There's a few things that are a little bit different.
Oh, there is an additional one on this one. There are no impact on town services. The facility will provide a commercial recreational community with improved access to natural waters and support the town's blue economy. Okay, comments? Yes, Mary?
So number three, it says there is minimal impact to the traffic flow and adequate parking exists. Do... Currently, do fishermen come and park and then fish off with Morse Pier? So we're adding, what is it, 14?
So we'll have a grand total of seven, six to seven spots that are for boats coming... And those boats are coming from existing lobster boats that are on moorings now in Manchester. My intention is to offer two spots to people on the waitlist to bring... As I've explained in the past, to bring the numbers up to the original strength when I first started here number boats. So we're talking about the lobstermen that come every day, get on their boats and go out fishing, and maybe two more total.
So I'm not clear on what you just said. But so we're adding 14. How many are being added at Morse?
We're adding... We have two lobster boats there now at a dock. And we're adding enough room for four to five more.
But they're currently moored in the harbor.
And then they are, right. So those spots will be offered to lobster fishers who already have a mooring in the harbor.
So they already have, the parking isn't an issue.
Right.
So there's no increase in parking needed?
Two more. We'll invite two more boats in from the waitlist to put on moorings. They'll take mooring spots out there to replace two of the four or five that are vacated by the ones coming into the pond. So it's...
But that doesn't come without parking space.
Right. It's a grand increase of two.
Other comments on the conditions?
Just some sentencing and typos, but...
Um, do you want to...
Um... So number two, so the proposal meets community by allowing the extended-use pier for use by the local commercial fleet. It will also provide, so maybe just a period there.
Period, yeah.
And then number six, harbor views will be maintained as the use of Reed Park. The use of, again, Reed Park.
Other comments on the rest of the letter? We have the same section.
Yeah, same zip code and section.
Yep.
So did we discuss in paragraph 123? It says minor repairs will also be completed to address maintenance concerns and restore stability and safety to the pier.
It's the existing pier. We did discuss that.
That's part of the grant.
That's part of the project.
Can I just elaborate just when, sure we're clear?
Right, so the location of the ramp. And correct me if I'm wrong here, Jeremy or Fiona. The ramp has to be adjusted from its current location and upgraded a little bit to support the heavier ramp that we have.
The ramp is in, sorry, the ramp is in the same place I'm going to offer the pier. But we had to re-destruct on the special use existing conditions. So we just had to make some modifications to the framing there just to make sure everything was, you know, surfably stable. And we had to reangle that gangway a little bit to land on the new line of floats with the proper clearance on it.
But I think that's shown in the plans in the application.
Yes.
Okay.
And the grant covers that.
So we haven't written the grant for construction. We've only written the grant for the engineering and permitting piece the way the Secret Economic Council does their funding, just to fund a full project. They don't anymore. If they give you funding for engineering and permitting, they expect you to come back and apply for instruction piece once you get far enough down the road. They're trying not to tie up their money. So we're going to get 80% when we ask for it.
So maybe that shouldn't be in this special permit, is my point. If it's not part of this...
It's all integral for the project.
The maintenance piece, Mary, you're referring to?
Yeah.
No, I think the maintenance piece was part of the application.
Okay, so it's like a phase two?
Well, maintenance is just the maintenance that we do yearly or bi-yearly.
No, it's the repairs to the float.
Oh, repairs.
That Jeremy just described. That is, that was sort of the entire...
Yeah, that's part of the application for the project. I mean, it's not going to be done until we move to the construction phase, but it still has to be in the engineering and permitting piece in order to move the project.
So I'm sorry, I just have a question about that, fine. I'm not sure you can answer it or not. But so the funding for Morse Pier has been secured for the engineering piece. The majority of the construction grant has not even been submitted at this point?
We wouldn't apply until we are close to or have some permits in hand. The SEC won't accept applications until they're far enough down the road where you're going to use the funds that they give you in a reasonable period of time. They don't want $500,000 sitting for two years while you're going through... Because they could be using that to fund other projects. And that's something that they've sort of evolved into maybe three years ago. I applied for a grant for a whole project and they said, no, we're doing it this way now. If we give you this piece, then when you're ready, you're going to reply and we're going to give you the other piece. You're expected to apply. But no, we do not have a gap.
So we do the work that this grant is funding and then we apply?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments on the site plan, site permit and site plan approval?
So just it references Tuck's point at the end as well instead of the...
And sorry, just one last question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
There was, there had been some discussion, I think, about, and you just mentioned, that the full amount of construction will not be covered by this grant.
80%.
So, which leaves about $100,000 if...
Which I have requested in the capital budget to come from water. You got it?
I think we're...
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing that, I will take a motion to close the public hearing for Morse Pier. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved. Second? Second by Chris. Sue Filbrick?
Yes.
Gordon Brewster?
Yes.
Chris Alney?
Yes.
Sarah Creighton votes yes.
Yes.
Peter Morton?
Yes.
Mary Foley?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to approve the special permit and site plan approval granted to the town of Manchester for the plan at Morse Town Pier Fisherman's Facility as drafted tonight?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Peter Morton seconds. Any other discussion? We'll call vote, Mary?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes. Chris?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Oh, no, I dropped my hat.
Laura, you got one thing off our plate.
Thank you.
Great patience by our...
Thank you, everybody. Okay, let's...
Thank you.
We're going to now vote to continue the public hearing for cell signaling technologies scheduled to continue tonight. We are going to continue that to October 15th. That's a Tuesday at 6:30 PM. We have a letter from Mark Lewski representing cell signaling requesting that we continue the public hearing. So I'll take a motion for self, continue the hearing for self, without any discussion. One moves.
A second.
So I'll take a... Did I have to, I didn't have to open the hearing?
No.
Okay. I do need a roll call on this. Sue Filbrick?
Yes.
Mark? Gordon Brewster? Chris Alney?
Yes.
Sarah Creighton votes yes. Peter Morton?
Yes.
Laura, tennis?
Yes.
And Mary Foley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item tonight is a discussion of the conservation restriction at Long Hill. We have tonight Crystal Point from Greenbelt, P A C, has submitted an application for CPC funding. And Chris will do it very quickly, will describe the project. Our reason for talking about this tonight is that if there is a town interest in land, the planning board will need to make a recommendation to town meeting. What is not our domain is whether or not CPC should fund it. We're not making a recommendation on that. We don't know how much CPC has for funding. And we don't, whether the select board is going to put it on the warrant. That's not our hunt either. Whether we think the project is fabulous or not fabulous in its entirety, it's simply about the conservation restriction. So just to be clear. The other piece is that Sue Filbrick will not be... Isn't about her, she will not be commenting.
It's right behind me.
Commenting on that. And I have filed a disclosure with the town clerk. I've spoken to the ethics office and filed a disclosure with the town clerk. I sit on the Greenbelt Board, but on the Ethics Commission's advice, I don't believe that I have a conflict that is in a way that jeopardized my ability to act in a fair manner. And, but I have made that disclosure as required to the town clerk. So anybody else have any other procedural stuff? Okay, so Chris, Little Point. Can I bring up some of the, in your application for those people at home?
Thank you. I was going to ask if you had those available.
I do.
I have paper for folks in person, but if you have it.
I think we all have it in our pockets, but... Could you pass around the paper?
Of course, just in case. There you go.
Thanks. Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Thanks very much. So my name is Chris Little Point. I'm president of Essex County Greenbelt. Thank you for the time on the agenda this evening. Greenbelt has the opportunity to acquire 330 acres of land in Manchester and Gloucester. The De Normandy land, also known as Long Hill, about 150 acres are in Manchester and the remaining 180 acres are on the Gloucester side. For those of you who've been in towns for years, you will remember in the late 1990s, the Manchester portion of the property was the subject of a significant development threat and an effort was made to protect the vast majority of that land. So in the late 90s, about 120 acres of the land in Manchester was permanently protected and is still protected by a conservation restriction that's held by the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. The, at that time, about 30 acres of land at the top of Long Hill was left unprotected and was and is privately owned right at the end of Colburn Road. In subsequent years, that landowner acquired an adjacent 180 acres of land in Gloucester. So there's, again, that's the 330 acre...
Maybe you could point it to it on the...
So in the red outline, that's the 330-acre assemblage that we were trying to put together. So the...
Just don't touch the screen. Okay, you can go right up to it and point.
So you can see this area here is the unrestricted portion of the land in Manchester, about 30 acres right at the end of Colburn Road. So Greenbelt has all of this land under agreement. And our plan, if we're able to put the funding together, is that we would own all of it. It would be essentially left in its natural condition with its extensive trail system that connects over into Gloucester and north to Cranbury Pond and south to Fort Trask. We would manage it, maintain the trails, provide wayfaring signage as we do with our, you know, network of more than 2,000 acres of land throughout the county. All our properties are open to the public from dawn till dusk. On the Gloucester side, as part of our funding that's coming from the state landscape partnership program, we are required and happy to convey a conservation restriction to the city of Gloucester. On the Manchester side, in the event that the town is a funding partner on the project, and that, as was said, that's a meeting later in the week to start to talk about that. If the town is a funding partner on the project, the town could hold a conservation restriction over the presently unrestricted 30 acres in Manchester. So that'd be land that Greenbelt owns, is responsible for managing, but the town would hold the restriction. So we've met with the Open Space Committee and with the Conservation Commission, who both endorse this concept. I know we have a lot of other things on the agenda this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'll pause there. So we're, again, just very quickly, this is a property that is incredibly important for climate resilience. It's a tremendous recreational asset. It is part of one of the largest intact interior forests in all of the county. And it's just in a variety of ways, from protecting some of the headwaters of Cat Brook and Wolf Trap Brook, it's sort of off the charts from a natural resource standpoint. So from our standpoint, in terms of choosing parcels to permanently protect and to sort of bring into the public sphere, this is a poster child. So we're pleased with the opportunity and we'd be happy to take any questions you have.
And there is existing trails through there already, right? That's the whole Colburn Road area?
Correct, correct. So there's, as part of the, what I would call the first phase of this project in that initial conservation restriction, there is public access on 120 acres of the land in Manchester now. That trail system extends onto the unprotected 30 acres. It extends across the line into Gloucester and is part of a network of trails that crosses about 1,400 acres of land running north up to 128, running east all the way over to Mount Ann and beyond.
Mark? Something to add? Anything to add?
No, I've been up to the property and it's a nice piece of land. It's kind of the high point of that area there. There are existing trails through the undeveloped portion that do connect, although it's not shown here, but they do connect to the regular network. That's there.
Okay.
Can you just answer, where do people park in Manchester to get there, to access this?
So there's really three places. There's one, there's the fairly large lot on Colburn Road at Dexter Pond Conservation Area, which is, I'm estimating a 10 or 12 car parking lot. As you drive further in Colburn Road, there are two or three places that people park. There's a gate right away with a pull-off where you can park probably four cars. Then there are two additional parking areas, little gravel pull-outs on the left, where presently, there's each probably three to four cars space in each one. And very easily could be, you know, a couple of rocks could be pushed back and could add some additional capacity. But that's actually quite a bit of capacity that exists on Colburn Road. And certainly, people come in from the Magnolia Ave side and from the north on trails, from forests and in from Gloucester as well.
Okay, so it's Colburn Road that has access?
Colburn Road is the primary, easiest existing parking.
Laura?
I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm just trying to understand the map and what's in and out. So the red lines delineate parcels, but if you're looking at the aerial photo versus the green shading, what's what here in terms of what is to be acquired?
Zoom back out. We're usually good at maps, but we've struggled with this one. So, thank you for the question. So, we are buying everything that is in red. Red with green has the existing conservation restriction on it.
Okay.
But it's owned by whom?
It's all owned by De Normandy.
I see.
But it's subject to a conservation restriction held by Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. So we'll buy the restricted land under that restriction.
Okay.
Well, we're also buying this bit, which is the unrestricted portion that's in Manchester. This square, we are not buying, that is owned by the town of Manchester. And that's, again, part of the project back in the late 90s, and I feel like that was perhaps a water tower location or part of a future water system potential.
And then it looks like a lot of woodlots or something up there with those long fingers?
Yeah, so on the Gloucester side, these are intervening parcels that are owned by the city of Gloucester. I think actually, one of these might be owned by Manchester. Don't hold me to it, it's one of these, one of those two.
And then where you see the satellite without the green shading, with all the yellow paths running through, and you're seeing through to the tree cover, is that? That large parcel?
These parts here.
Right in there, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so it's this, it's this kind of snaking piece, but that's all intermeshed with, these are the fingers of Gloucester watershed land that are...
Okay. And you said, thank you, that helps to clarify, you said that you had mapped the watersheds and that this is protecting headwaters or water resources?
Some of the upper reaches are both Wolf Trap Brook and Cat Brook. So Cat Brook is, sort of, starts way up there and winds down. And Wolf Trap Brook, as I recall, starts in this area before it comes into town.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, did you say you're buying conservation restricted land? So it's already restricted?
Right. So of the 330 acres, 120 are already restricted and the rest is not restricted.
Okay. Is there a reason to buy that if it's already restricted?
Our primary motivation here is to acquire and protect the unrestricted acreage. However, there's an advantage to buying it all, one, it's for sale as a package, so we're buying all of the land that is in contiguous ownership. Although the land that's already restricted has public access, it's still owned by a private party. So it doesn't, and it's quite nice. It doesn't have the directional signage and the, you know, the kiosks and the, you know, it's not brought into land trust ownership and sort of enhancement in the way that the rest of our properties are, which I think, over time, provides a better visitor experience. So, for those of you who don't know our properties, what I mean by enhancement are, you know where you are when you're on the trail. We have, you know, very, very low-key signage and very low-key parking and that. So it's not about changing that, it's really just about bringing that whole property into land trust ownership so that it can be managed well together over time.
Chris?
So, I'm on the CPC also, so I'm gonna put on my, leave my CPC hat off and my planning board hat. So the parcel we're talking about is the dark green rectangle in the middle, is that right?
So, Greenbelt is buying everything that's in red. But in terms of what the town, if the town were to participate, the town's conservation restriction would cover this bit. And the strip along here, but this piece here.
And the acquisition is just of the conservation easement, not the land itself?
No, it's... So Greenbelt is going to own the land and be responsible for managing it?
Own the land.
Will own it, manage it, maintain it forever and have all the responsibility of that. But the town's investment would go to purchase a conservation restriction, so the town...
So we're just buying a conservation restriction from the Greenbelt, is that right?
In the actual order of operations at the closing, that's the order that it would go in. But, you know, this is a, you know, a partnership project as where it's someone funding. Yeah, so we would go to closing, we would buy all of the land, we would convey a restriction to Gloucester, we would convey a restriction to Manchester.
Do you know why it was not included in the conservation restriction when all the surrounding land was put into conservation?
Others who were here at the time might have a better answer. I think this was partly a, it was a situation where there was a conservation buyer, really, that bought the property and the density of the project went down from a number that people didn't want to a relative handful. And I think it was, the financials at the time were, it was a combination of probably tax benefits, money, and retaining land value for later. And now it's later.
And my final question is, are there any municipal uses that could be put on that land that would still allow the conservation easement but might be a more active use by the town? Such as an athletic field or something? I haven't been up there, so I haven't...
Yeah, so I think there would be fair questions as to whether that was an appropriate site for athletic fields in that spot, but more particularly, the state landscape partnership grant, which is funding $1.1 million of the overall purchase, is for acquisition of natural land with free public access for past recreational uses. So it's not a grant that's compatible with athletic fields or...
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I just want, is it landlocked? Is that piece of land landlocked?
It's not landlocked, it has frontage on Colburn Road.
So it is, it is entirely developable?
Yes.
Within topography and utilities and all that stuff? Okay. Any other discussion? Does the board want to take a position on this tonight or think about it and wait and see how it plays out with CPC?
Do you clarify what the position wants to be?
So the motion I would suggest is that the plant, we have to simply, when there is land, transfer instruments and CR conservation restriction counts that go to town meeting. We are asked for a recommendation. So, the motion I would suggest is that the planning board recommends the purchase of a conservation restriction on a De Normandy Long Hill property as part, period, I guess.
So no...
To the, and then, yeah, and then that's simply, if we, if it goes as far as town meeting, Allen will say, I've received a report from the planning board, they have recommended the purchase of a conservation restriction.
There's no rush to do this tonight.
There is not a rush to do it tonight. If we have more questions, so, there's a reason to delay, and I'm trying to get things... The reason I brought it on tonight is that we have a whole lot in our future, so if we push it off tonight, then it just means we have to discuss it another night. And it seems like we have Chris here, and I'm not sure anything is gonna change between now and then. And it does not opine on whether the CPC should do it or whether the select board should put it on the warrant. So that's what I'd like to suggest. And so that would be the motion I would suggest. The planning board recommends the purchase of the CR, the conservation restriction for the Long Hill De Normandy property presented tonight. Yes, Mary?
So I'd like to suggest that we would hear from Open Space, you said you spoke with Open Space?
Open Space and Conservation Commission each voted unanimously to support the project.
Okay. Because I know, I believe it was Open Space had gone in front of the select board about protecting land around our water supply. And I'm just looking at this saying, okay, great, I mean, I think this protects probably mostly Gloucester water supply.
Actually, we're a little bit denser in Gloucester's water supply, but...
But I'm just trying to, you know, as the town weighs 250,000, you know, where we're putting the money for land, when it was brought up to protect our water supply, it was, it didn't move anywhere, and so I'm just wondering if this land is as important or more important? It's just a question for us to consider.
I think that is a question for the select board and the CPC, not necessarily for us. I think maybe it's, maybe the motion is to recommend a conservation restriction for the Long Hill De Normandy in the event that it moves forward with a recommendation for CPC funding.
Steve King is...
Yes, go ahead, you have a comment.
Sorry, I was talking to Rogers, 59 Forest Street. So I'm just curious, I'm trying to understand, so this is currently private property?
Yes.
And that's up at the top of Colburn?
Yes.
Who's the owner that is selling?
Philip De Normandy.
Okay. And then, will this have an effect on Colburn Road?
No.
Okay. But just maybe some parking off of Colburn?
So there's existing parking on Colburn Road.
Right.
And there's existing access to trails, and that's really, that's what's, that's the parking and access that will be there in the after condition as well.
Right. So you're not looking to expand the parking?
I mean, if there's a poorly designed three-car parking lot that we might square off so you can fit a fourth car, we would do that. We're not putting a 20-car parking lot on the top of the hill, it'd be just a...
Right now, I know parking lots, yeah, but...
There are, there's two on the left-hand side.
It's gravel, like it's dirt and gravel spots.
Yeah, that's how all of our parking areas throughout our entire network of properties are gravel, in some cases they're pull-offs, in rare cases, there's a pull-in and a more formal lot. In this case, where there's, it's a very quiet road, there's three or four parking spaces in two locations, and a very sizable parking lot at Dexter Pond, which directly connects in here, I can't think of a reason to add additional parking, particularly because there are a lot of different ways to get in from a lot of different roads and different trailheads in this whole network.
And this piece can be accessed from the existing parking?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, would anybody like to venture a motion? Do you want to take... I'd like to see us try to...
Move forward.
Okay, I hear a motion from Gordon.
Yes.
And I stated to recommend the, that Manchester hold a conservation restriction on the De Normandy Long Hill property if it is presented by the CPC to town meeting.
Excellent.
Excellent, okay, do you have a second, Laura?
Second.
Any other discussion? I think we can take a vote point. Allen, favor, raise your hands.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, Chris is abstaining and Sue has abstained. Okay, so we have five voting yes and he knows. Great, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Chris, for coming out tonight, appreciate it. Okay. The next thing is we received an email letting us know that Mill Street is a scenic road. Thanks for letting us know that, I think that was helpful information. And in your packet tonight, or Mark, I think forwarded the Chapter 40, Section 15(c), scenic road designations, which indicates that a scenic road, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction or paving work should not involve or include cutting or removal of trees or tearing down or the destruction of stone walls or portion thereof, except with prior consent of the planning board and so forth. And in 1985, there was an article on town meeting warrant that put Mill Street and Forest Street as scenic roads under Chapter 40, Section 15(c). So I checked with Nate, is Nate still here? He's gone. And Chuck, who indicated that the proposed work on Mill and Forest would not be the tearing down of, or destruction of stone walls for the cutting or removal of trees. So, that's what I've learned. And I know, Mary, you had some thoughts or concerns about this, does that answer the question or are there...
Well, I mean, I have driven down, well, first, I think we should, as a planning board, I would recommend we adopt a scenic road bylaw, knowing that we have these two streets and maybe others will follow. Other towns have their own separate scenic road bylaw to add on to what the state states in their law. So I took a drive down Mill Street and Mill towards Forest, there's a lot of just stumps left all of a sudden, the trees cut off and the stumps are about this high, and then there's other trees that have markings on them. So I'm curious as to who cut them for what and why? If it's not for an upcoming sewer and water piping?
Sue, comments?
So I think that that was part of tree cutting to avoid power outages, because we're always, you know, I live on Loading Place Road, and I had to give permission to National Grid to cut trees on my properties because trees, branches are always falling on wires and we're losing our power in Mill, Forest Lane, Loading Place Road. And those trees went at the same time, the Loading Place Road trees, I think it was part of that whole project.
Ann?
My recollection is not precise, but I do remember at a recent tree hearing, sometime about a year and a half, we were presenting a number of trees in that area, which the tree wardens said were failing and dangerous. And the select board asking, acting as the tree authority said, yes, sure, if they're in the wires and dead or dying, they can be cut.
So presumably, those, what Ann and Sue are saying is that that is not to do with the recent planned... It looks, I'm not sure if utilities are...
So yeah, I guess I'm not clear where the state law lands on that, and I think it, for us to have a town scenic road bylaw... for us to have a town scenic road bylaw would benefit the reasoning for having a scenic road, because if they're just cutting them, and then you just have a bunch of stumps, doesn't add to the scenic road visual by any means. And then there's, there's pink, I wouldn't say ribbons, but pink markers on various trees. I don't know what those are for. But I think we can do better for our scenic roads is basically the bottom line.
Okay, thank you. Come, Anne?
When Tom Henderson, our tree warden, wanders through an area and looks for trees that he considers dead or dying, he will put over that on them. Sometimes it's just a piece in the end, sometimes it's tied around. Depends on the size of it. I think those are trees that the tree warden has serious concerns about. I think there is a tree hearing coming up in November. I could hear about that.
We should probably get a determination as to whether or not the planning board has to weigh in on this. It does say, after a road's been designated a scenic road, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work done with respect thereto shall not involve. So that's different than utilities or tree health.
I don't, that sounded to me as if it's repair of the road.
That's right. That's about my point. That the scenic statute says that it has to do with road repair is what needs a hearing, not utility is not listed as a hearing criteria, as requiring a hearing, nor is removal of dead trees requiring a hearing by the planning board, as I read this. So anyway, okay, and we, any other discussion about the work? Yes, Laura?
I think Mary's suggestion leads from the parking lot, a future zoning item. So I think receiving a zoning bylaw is a good idea. We, I think we make reference, at least the sightlines and scenic vistas. And when we get there, you know, vegetation management could be one of the criteria that we could discuss.
And we are going to talk very briefly about future works.
I do have one comment on this, which is during recodification, we did talk about scenic roads.
Yeah.
And my recollection of the discussion was, every road in Manchester is a scenic road, or everyone's going to argue to have their road called a scenic road. And so we decided that might be a little bit too complicated to put into recodification. It's not to say that Mary's idea is a good one.
No, you have, well, you have to get a scenic road designation voted at town meeting. So I think during recodification, we weren't even aware we had a scenic roads.
Yeah, no, that's right.
So we know we have two designated ones. I would imagine people could bring to town meeting, you know, for each street, or, you know, wherever else. But I think, I think, yes, to put it on a list, but I think we, say we put things on a list all the time, and then nothing happens. So I do think we need a zoning bylaw to solve the list.
Okay, I know Liz, you had raised that, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Does this answer your question?
It does, except I, I kind of wanted clarification on the timing of it. The reason why I thought it was all connected was all, everything happened in February. I had gotten a certified letter regarding the sewer lines coming in for cell signaling technology on, give me a second. I have a migraine, so my eyes are a little fuzzy. On February 14th, the letter was dated, I got it on February 17th. And I was looking back on some text messages that I had sent a friend, her heads up on detours, because she's constantly coming up and down. So I was letting her know when, when the street was closed and open and all of that. And it was around the same time. I had sent her a text on the 14th and the 15th, saying that Mill Street was closed, it was for the trees. The following week, on the 21st, I found that timing suspicious, that, which is why I was, this all came up. And with other people bringing me the documents with my dad's name and stuff on it. And I also had, it was, I don't know how to pronounce the name, the Asplinda Tree Service, they were the ones who were taking down the trees. So I have a question, are they the ones, do they typically do the work for National Grid, is for taking down trees?
I think National Grid does their own trees.
I don't know.
Yeah, so.
That's who did the work on Loading Place Road.
Okay.
That's who they hired to do it.
By National Grid, not by the town?
I think she's asking who hired them.
Yeah.
I only know on our road, that was National Grid.
I'm just trying to get clar, because it is a scenic road, which is a state law. I'm just trying to get clarification on who paid for what for those trees.
Okay, and Gail, that was Liz Thomas, which is probably your question.
Thank you.
Again, I had.
All right, thanks.
No problem. Greg, welcome back.
Thank you. Let me just answer your question. Asplinda is not the contractor that town uses. So any work that they do is not town-sponsored work. That is typically grid work. They don't want to hire, hire that firm.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments on that? Yes, go ahead.
Roland Wood, 54th Forest Street. So actually, I'm a neighbor of Liz's as well, and I've lived on Forest Street actually my whole life. And I remember my parents went, came before the town meeting on this whole issue of the scenic country lane and that designation. And I think the intent of the whole thing was to preserve the, particularly the, it's not just cutting down trees, it's like the proportion of Forest Street that I'm on is, there's stone walls on both sides of the road, and where you live as well. I mean, it's, you know, it's not only do you see the golf course, but the intent was to try to preserve the flow of the road through there. So it wasn't about, can we change the paving, or does, you know, the water may need to be done, or the sewer, or the whatever. It literally was about the look and feel of the road. And what they were trying to avoid was, this is kind of, kind of rolled back the clock a long way, but Southern Avenue used to be a road in Lake Forest Street and Mill Street that meandered through the woods from Manchester to Essex. And as we all know now, it's like a highway now. It's like a big straight road with one curve in it. So what my parents in particular were trying to avoid is to have Forest Street end up being improved, quote unquote, to look like something like Southern Avenue.
That's helpful, thank you. And I do think the scenic bylaw is very clear that the stone walls are something that is, would need a hearing.
Yes.
To, I'm not going to say it's protected, but it has the protection of at least a special, a review by the planning board in a public hearing. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else on this topic? Yes?
Stephanie Rogers, I just have a question about the, I know cell signaling isn't here, but I've been trying to reach DPW, no one is calling me back. But the, the large pipes that are laid down the road are very much close to my rock wall, like, and so I might have six or seven feet from Forest Street, and they're flooded right now up against the rock wall. And that is, I think, my land. And I'm curious, I want an answer about where do you plan to lay those, because I don't want my rock wall falling all the way down my property. I want, it should be next to the road.
Yeah. Greg, can you, I don't think the planning board can answer that.
Okay.
But Greg, if you have, can help us out, that'd be great.
Yes, again, any, any type of insulation that is happening is occurring in the current, underneath the current pavement. So the pipes that are laid along the road are just temporarily lying there. That's not when they're gone.
Okay, thank you.
They'll, they'll be going into underneath the pavement.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we have a lot on our agenda tonight, so I think we're going to move on unless, hopefully that's helpful. The next.
Hello, Sarah?
Yes, go ahead.
I have no idea who just spoke.
Oh, thank you.
Before Greg, I know Greg, but I have no idea who spoke.
Could you just say your name again?
Yeah, I did say my name, Stephanie Rogers, 59 Forest Street.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Gail.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the update on the Affordable, update on the Affordable Homes Act and the ADA ADU bylaw. Mark, can you just give us a quick update? You did send us a, a packet from KP Law, and if you could just kind of give us very high level where that.
So the memo from KP Law, as well as some other information, basically says that the law isn't going to go into effect until February of next year. If there's something in the law that conflicts with your local bylaw, the law, the state law prevails. So if you have a requirement, so one of the requirements of state law is that you cannot impose owner occupancy requirements. So if you have a local bylaw that requires an owner to live in one of the, either the accessory unit or the main unit, that would no longer be valid, and state law prevails. So you could not, it's an unenforceable restriction in your bylaw. There is nothing that's requiring you to make those changes. It's just, that's, that's the way it is. And there's several other things related to parking, related to restricting short-term rentals, the square footages, and et cetera. So there's numerous things that we ought to, I think, moving forward, but not right now, because it's clear that the state law prevails. So it's, any restrictions that we might have are just on, that conflict with the state law, the state law prevails. But it is something that we ought to be reviewing, probably, you know, after the first of the year, to adjust what we have, in order to comply with the law and make whatever other adjustments the board feels is necessary to propose for a spring town meeting. So that, that would be my recommendation with some of the upcoming work that we need to do. I think it's way too rushed to even begin to have discussions on new or adjusted bylaw right now.
Sarah Melish, I see your hand raised. I'll come to you in a minute. The, I guess I would concur that we don't have time. There's, you know, getting a bylaw together takes some discussion. We have a lot on our plate, case, public hearing, and then putting it on a warrant. So I would concur personally that we should address it, but that before 2025 is unreasonable. Sue?
I agree. I mean, especially if you have received a determination that, you know, state law overrides whatever we have. I mean, eventually we'll make our law comply, but, you know, right now, it just sort of invalidates what we have.
Are there restrictions that you can apply to ADUs, or basically not?
Yes, because there's an important one, which is you can not allow short-term rentals.
Isn't it a frequency over the course of a year, though? That's how you?
Well, it's very complicated, yeah. That's why it's going to be hard to transit.
Right. And also, it seems like they're still trying to figure things out, too. For us, there's still some open-ended questions, I think, so.
They can produce regulations.
Yeah.
So we can, we can adopt regulations. We just can't make the regulations stricter than what the state law allows. So, but we can add other things. And then, again, there's open-ended questions that if you watch the video, it sounds like you might have, that were discussed, what is in, you know, future court cases or amendments to the law, we'll address some of those things, but.
Okay, great. Is there general consensus that that's the strategy we should pursue?
So I, my thought is that we're not going to make it for this fall town meeting, probably. I think this is a very important thing that we should have done well before the next town meeting. I would, if we have another town meeting, that this should be on it. I think it leaves us not vulnerable, but leaves it open, because it kind of negates our current ADU bylaw, and along with the definitions that we have. And we can restrict and have a site plan review, restrict setbacks, restrict height, restrict short-term rentals. I'm not sure, maybe we can say it needs to be on a conforming law. This is just for single resident districts, so it couldn't happen in the LCD, it couldn't happen in District D, or G, or anywhere. So I would say I agree, we wouldn't be able to do it by November, but if there's another town meeting before the spring, then it should definitely be on there.
Great, thank you. Sarah Melish, yes?
Yeah, as Chair of the ZBA, I think this is a ticking time bomb. Any ADUs added after February would be allowed to have the short-term rentals, unless and until we have a bylaw that prohibits it, and we could not go retroactive. We also have the ticking time bomb, that it does not apply to all of our districts. And I think that individuals will feel it does, and I think they're going to come before the ZBA for variances. And, you know, I think something needs to be brought forth in November. I'm sorry, but I think it's too late to wait till next year.
What districts, okay, clarify, though, it doesn't apply to all districts?
It's a single fam, it's a single residence district only. So G District today
Yeah.
can have.
Okay, I got it.
Units for employees of the owner, they have to look on site. So now, so they're not covered at all, and they think they are. You've got B, you've got D that are multifamily. So there's a large portion of the town that the state law does not clearly cover. And I guarantee you that residents in those districts are going to come forward and apply for them, and are going to sue the town if they can't do it.
Right.
That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Or I would add that.
Can I just get Greg to clarify that? Greg, go ahead.
So I can't believe that an alternative rather than zoning is that we do have currently, albeit a fairly weak, short-term rental bylaw, as a general bylaw, and that that could be an approach to at least address the issue of what qualifies for short-term rentals and when. You could do it through the general bylaws, an alternative through zoning.
Not sure what you mean.
Okay. So you're saying that the general bylaw would restrict this, would restrict short-term rentals regardless of whether they're in an ADU or other, or it's, it might anyway?
Correct. For example, I've also just heard a pretty radical change to their short-term rental requirements. It's worth a read. I think it's instructive of, an example of what could be done here as well.
Who's, who's short-term rental, is it the?
Loser.
The city of Loser just adopted a new ordinance by the city council that may be instructive for us.
It's a general bylaw, so the select board can do that, not us.
Correct, correct.
So I would, I appreciate Sarah's urgency, and I agree with her. And I also think the town needs to have in place, it's not the planning board responsibility, but the scaffolding in place for enforcement. I don't know what that is, so that if come February 2nd, or some documents they said for February 3rd, that people start doing these ADU bylaws, what's the, what's the enforcement? I know we currently just fall back on residents, snitching on other residents, but I think we need a better basis now that we're introducing byright bills. And that would be in the select board jurisdiction, not ours, but I would urgently suggest that they have that in place before February. but I would urgently suggest that they have that in place before February. But I would, I agree with Sarah that we should do this for November if we can.
I guess, my opinion on it, I better understand the sense of urgency. I want to protect our, we've been working for a year on MBTA and I want to make sure we don't get distracted from that. And I think if somebody has a specific proposal that they want to bring forward that, and, and to shepherd it through the way, you know, then, then I'd be open to that. But I don't want to distract the rest, the core things of self signaling and MBTA, which we've already got on our plate and are committed to seeing through. So if somebody has a specific proposal that you want to, us to look at, then given what I've heard tonight, I guess I would say we, we could take a, take a look at it at a next meeting. But realistically, to, because I've gone through the calendar, just, just plain old, realistically, to, we are going to need to have a hearing for the MBTA zoning on October 28th, which we need, means we really need a near final draft to post on October 2nd. And so the, an ADU by law would essentially need the same timeline, which would mean that we would need a, probably a, an additional meeting of us to just even take it up, to even have thought about it. And we don't currently have a, we'll talk about meetings in a minute, but notwithstanding the upcoming meetings list, I don't actually think we have a meeting probably planned. So I think logistically, it's an unfortunate risk. And if, if we felt strongly enough that it was a risk, then maybe we could push for a February town meeting if that was, we had other things. But I think that's also kind of unlikely. So I just don't see how we can get it done unless somebody has a draft in their pocket right now. Unfortunately.
I don't have one.
You've watched the video.
No, I did watch a video, but I didn't draft a by law.
But you're gonna volunteer.
No, I'm just, so the timeline for the, the MBTA final draft is we have to have it ready on October 2nd.
We'll come to that in a minute.
Okay.
Okay. So the next.
But sorry, just, just find, who was it? Chris, were you gonna say something?
Oh, I think Greg was gonna say something.
Sorry, Greg, just, just, I mean, hearing Sarah so vehemently implore the urgency around this, I think should be noted. I mean, I.
Yeah, I do know.
Yeah, so.
Greg?
Yeah, just again, the, the general by law approach may be a way to offload it from your pay and still accomplish the same goal. And in addition to that, we could certainly think about the late January, early February special town meeting. There's nothing that would, that stops us from doing that. We feel the urgency is, is there, requires.
I'm sure that we've got a quorum for an ADU.
Does the general by law provide us protection against the ADU at all?
Well, I think the general by law Greg's referring to has to do with short-term rentals. So it's not an accessory dwelling unit by law. That would be through zoning.
Sarah?
So the general by law allows short-term rentals if it's under certain conditions, very loose conditions with the select board. Under the ADU state law, you have the opportunity to prohibit them when we're sending ADUs. That's a big difference. And once, once we pass the February date, you can't retroactively prohibit the short-term rentals on an ADU that was created before our, our bylaws changed. So perspective.
If I may, I believe we can confirm with town council, but the general short-term rental by law could prevent short-term rentals in ADUs.
If it was modified?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, but you'd be modifying, that would include our current ADU by law as well? So you'd want to do it across the board?
Okay. Laura?
I think Greg's approach makes sense to get the short-term rental general by law polished up because it's something we need to do anyhow. And if that gets us out in front of the ADU, which doesn't take effect till next year in any case, then it's something we're going to need regardless and it can simply not allow it or whatever the select board thinks is the right approach. I think that's a reasonable and sensible approach. And I, I don't want to see us try to rush through language around the ADU that's sloppy. I'd like to see the time devoted to get it where we think it ought to be. So it seems like a parallel track.
I think we have consensus on that. Okay, great, thank you. The next liaison task force updates. We'll do the, keep MBTA at the end. Harbor Management Advisory Group did meet. It's going to be a general survey about harbor issues, very similar to the general. It's going to be, we all have open-ended questions around the harbor, very similar to the in-person event we had at the high school. That's going to be coming fairly soon. I'm not sure exactly when, but fairly soon. CPC?
We, CPC has a public hearing and a meeting on this Thursday at 5:30 PM on Zoom to discuss next year's funding round and to discuss the green belt proposal that we heard tonight.
Okay. Anything from Dick?
Downtown of Boomin had a meeting on Wednesday. It was going quite smoothly until my friend Mark. And it was generally, it's a discussion of all that's happening with, Nate was there and he talked about all the works, projects going on. He talked about the few initiatives that Dick has on their own. And then Mark gave us a full analysis of the MBTA and everything. Then he went rogue on us. All he did was sit on the end of the file saying, oh, no, those people are. We talked about a, hey, I'll call it a master plan to like a better word of, of design of nearly everything everywhere in this, in this, actually it was a general district, wasn't it?
Yeah, so, so what I, what I had proposed.
But it caused a lot of comments.
So what I proposed, which again would eventually come through the planning board, or at least portions of it would, is what I'd like to do is apply for a grant next spring when through the, the one-stop program to do a master plan for the general district. Because our general district includes more than just like our downtown core. It kind of spreads out all the way up to the boatyards, includes residential there, residential at the other end and goes up some of the side streets. So, so I think if we did a master plan for the entire general district, we would then kind of, as coming out of the master plan, come out with several products. One product would be is zoning changes. So do we create a residential district? Do we just have a core commercial district, mixed-use district for the, kind of the center of town and fold in some of the other residential areas into some of the other districts? How, how do we address, you know, design review? Do we want to fold in some design review into site plan for the review for downtown projects? Those types of things. Another work product would be having to do with the streetscape for let's say a core area of the downtown, let's say from Pine Street all the way to Beach and then beginning up Summer Street to where the cemeteries are, some core area. And so that we kind of look at what worked for the first project that they did and what, what isn't so nice about it? And how do we make some adjustments to that? As well as then extend the streetscape design all the way through, let's say from there all the way up to Pine Street. And then with that, you'd be able to subsequently apply for, for grants from the state actually for construction. Because now you have a planning document behind you, design work behind you. And, and so that just enhances your opportunity to, to receive grants for the reconstruction. And given the, kind of the long-term projects with the culvert right here on Central Street and how that's not even going to begin until the fall of next year, we have a lot of flexibility as far as time-wise to be able to, to do the planning and then do the grants for the other areas outside of that core area. So, and there's other benefits to doing that. You know, you look at what kind of zoning changes can we do to enhance the, the commercial character, businesses? You know, I mean, some of these things have been looked at before and with other groups, but it's never been really looked at as a comprehensive package. So I think that, that's really something that would be useful. So, so that generated, like you said, a little bit of discussion.
Again, the reason, reason why there is, the tips is comprised of a bunch of tiny little initiatives, like the wayfinding initiative that's going on throughout the town. And they talked about street benches being placed in here. And we've talked about sidewalk redesign and new curbing and new lighting and all that stuff around here. This, this right here would basically grab right around the whole thing and review it. Personally, I think it's, I like the idea. If in fact it's able to be enacted, I've done a zillion master plans throughout the whole my whole career. More often than not, they start off on the great fury and then they fade, disappear. Even, even for our commercial clients, our corporate clients as well here. But this, this one had an attraction to it. The idea of putting a look to the downtown and not mandating every house is one clavicle, with windshield shutters at six over six pace, but not, none of that stuff. But do put some kind of design criteria and a look and feel for it.
This actually also, you know, gets to the historic demolition delay.
Exactly.
Conversation, you could bring in historic and the Dick work and the pedestrian work and so.
The idea would be to create a task force, which would be representatives of, just like the MBTA one, of planning boards, zoning boards, select board, so that you get a, a true cross-section of, of your community and of the volunteers in the town that sit on these boards so that, you know, you can kind of get a comprehensive package and no one interest group kind of dictating what happens.
Okay, but not before November 18th? All right, Affordable Housing Trust, and you've been away, but any updates there?
We have a meeting tomorrow night, so next meeting I can give you an update.
Okay. Before I get to MBTA task force, any other liaison reports? Okay, MBTA task force.
So there was a public forum on Saturday morning, which I was not even to attend. But still did, but I hear it went very well.
Let's see, it was great. So Peter was there, the entire select board was there.
Sue did a great presentation.
Thank you. And about half the task force was there. The public showing was weak, but.
Weak like 30, 40, 50 long?
No, like less than 10, less than 10, but they were all people, no, there were more than five. Had not shown up before either to a forum or listening in to what was totally different from the usual crowd. So that was great. And some young residents who were really interested and they had come with questions that they'd written down and very engaged and had a lot of great suggestions on additional outreach and communication ideas. So it was well worth it. I also spoke at the Manchester Women's Club on Wednesday, Tuesday. And Ann Harrison was there, Sarah Melish and Sandy. But I did a presentation similar to the forum's presentation. They were very engaged. There are about 50 women there, lots of questions. You know, I'd say half the group had some knowledge of MBTA zoning. The other half, they were ignoring it. So they were very appreciative of, you know, having a presentation set before them and a lot, a lot of engagement, you know, terrific questions. And again, the more of that kind of thing we can do, not just with MBTA zoning, but with future zoning change initiatives, I think putting in that time to have informal discussions with people, like where they are at their meetings and committees. It just, I found that to be really helpful. So we have a virtual public forum on Thursday night at 7:00 PM. We're going to, a few people meet here. Obviously, you're all welcome. Sarah's going to give a short presentation this time, but all of the, hopefully the bulk of the time will be people with questions and comments. And I mean, that's, the whole purpose of it is engagement from the public. But you have to do a little bit of a presentation for people who, again, the folks who have no idea what any of this is about. So that is meant to be virtual. Of course, people can come here, but it's really meant to accommodate people who just can't show up to our meetings and things.
So we've also gotten the economic feasibility analysis of affordability, which shows that we can require 20% of units to be affordable. So that's good. We also got.
Can I just stop on that? And see if there's discussion? My, my question is, so what will that, how does that, how does that, what does that look like? And did we, so it means if there's five units, one of them would be affordable. If there are 10, there are two, et cetera. And at least one, at least two. And is it a matter of simply changing 10% to 20% in our draft? Or is there some other?
The draft we submitted was 20%.
Oh, we sent it in with 20%? Okay, great. So anything under five units would, would not have an affordability requirement.
That's correct.
But we have potential to make up some progress towards our town goals.
Yep.
Which was discussed on Saturday.
People had very good questions about that on Saturday. Did, has the task force done an analysis of how many affordable housing units are likely to be built? So in the downtown area, there's limits on housing. So we're probably not going to get any too much there because I think we have max at, in some areas at four units, five units. So is it just the LCD that will generate affordable housing?
No, there are actually, so for example, Newport Park and Powder House, there are quite a few units set aside there. So there could be up to 20 in those two areas.
So how would you get 20 new there?
So how would you get, so if there are 100 units altogether allowed in that district on those properties.
At Newport?
At Newport and Powder House.
That's not the real number.
No, I'm just being, I'm just giving examples, but.
No, but I'm, I'm just trying to, so, I mean, because I think that's a big concern is the affordable housing piece. So if we're able to say realistically, we could see, you know, 20 units generated or we could see 100 units of affordable generated. Like I, I think we need a solid number.
I think this is the whole problem with this MBTA zoning, which is it's not a building plan. which is it's not a building plan. We don't know how many units are going to be created.
No, I understand that. But I think just even understanding with our current restraints, what could even possibly?
What's the maximum potential? So how many lots have affordable? Can I just rephrase just, because the question I think you're asking is how many of the lots have, how many of the?
Parcels?
Parcels.
So, how many parcels would allow more than five units? And then of those, so if it, if allowed eight. If allowed eight, you'd get one affordable. If it allowed 10, you'd get two. So if we could do that math, it's sort of an upside. If that's, so I think it, I think it's.
That could be possible to do because the model does give us how many units could be constructed on each of the parcels, given the zoning parameters.
Didn't they do that in their report to determine?
No.
No, no.
That's a difference.
They did something. They had some sort of a new common development, depending on the percentage.
Yeah, they had a pro forma, but it was not, I'm not sure it was.
It was generic, I think.
Couldn't you just plug it into that model that you guys have been working on?
I don't, I don't know whether it's designed or calculated that way.
I don't think the model is something you can just plug into.
Yeah.
But if there is a list of how many potential units could be maxed on every parcel, then you can create kind of a if-then statement. If it's between five and nine, you get one unit. If it's under five, you get zero. If you get, if it's 10 to 14, you get two. I mean, you can kind of.
Well, I was just gonna say, so when you say that, you know, we have a, if the delta is 338, how many realistically affordable units would be generated? Are we going to be ahead of the game, status quo, or behind the game if it's full build-out rate? So are we truly increasing our percentage up to 10%? Or is it, how many units?
Because we don't know what will actually, to Chris's point, you don't actually know what we're gonna have.
You don't know what's actually gonna happen.
No, no, but what's the possibility of affordable?
Well, I think if we, I guess if you presented it carefully, what I would not like to do is to give people the idea that we're going to be generating 120 affordable units when we're not.
No, but you're just like everything else. You preface saying this isn't a, you know, a requirement to build. But if it's built, we'll get one unit or two units, affordable or whatever it is. Because, you know, there are a lot of people under the misconception that this is affordable housing and.
No, that's true.
Truly not. So if we could at least chip away at our affordable housing SHI numbers.
Well, and the other, the other thing about Powder House and Newport is those are both existing affordable housing complexes.
So those aren't counted? Yeah, I mean, this is just to get added.
But additional units that could be created there would be more likely to be affordable than not. It's not to say they have to be, but it's likely that the funding.
Sue has a comment.
I am really uncomfortable with the whole discussion. This is not an affordable housing law that we're having to comply with. And leaving people with any idea that that's part of it, I mean, we're trying to take advantage of that piece of it. But I think going down this road of saying, oh, you know, this many are possible, and so that means this parcel is this, and so they're going to do this. I mean, we have no idea whether someone is gonna even develop a parcel, number one. Number two, it might be luxury condos, you know? It just, I, I'm really uncomfortable going down that road. I, we can answer the questions with the facts as we've done. But to try and draw a conclusion that this is a way to help us towards the number, I think that's a dangerous conclusion.
I think just the flip side of that a little bit is that the baseline default with single-family without an affordable, excuse me, without a multifamily component is zero affordable units. So there is potential to build some affordable units, whether it gets you, you know, the overall number of units is also increasing, so. But so is it if you just build single-family housing, right? So there isn't a, there isn't a status quo where nothing new gets built, no new housing of any type. But it might be recognizing that we're not, this is not an affordable housing law. But it might just be interesting to illustrate that there is the potential to do capital A affordable housing and also housing that meets different income and family, family sizes or family types.
The other thing is that we are maximizing the, the amount that the state is, does allow.
Yeah.
So.
I think there's a real benefit there.
That's worth emphasizing, that.
Yeah, we've done the most we can. And to Sue's point, it's not affordable housing.
So Sue, I thought something else that was interesting to me at that meeting was Tiffany, our communications person. I thought had a really nice plan for what she intends to do.
She's been working for the past year and a half.
Yeah, and it sounds like it's really comprehensive and very well thought out. Videos, landing page, everything.
We're working on it.
That's great.
Anyone is welcome to our.
So that young gentleman who was there on Saturday.
Justin.
Justin, he would, I'm sure he would be very willing to help if you want him. I'll, 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 yeah.
Yeah, there's issues with accepting free help from people. So it just, just think about.
So can we move on to the propensity for development study?
Yeah, where is that?
So it's been done. I'm not thrilled with it. But it does conclude that of the 342 potential new units that could be done within the districts, probably less than 150 will likely be developed based on a financial model that compares the value of the existing property versus the value and the cost of developing it into the maximum.
Although, what period of time would that be?
That's a problem.
It doesn't say.
There's no period of time.
No period.
Well, we know, we know it's going to happen over years, but they don't say that.
They don't say.
So it's my understanding that you're working with them to clean up some typos and some graphs that don't have labels and ask that question, as well as a couple of other questions that seem to be omissions. Is that correct? So before we kind of put it out there.
The time being a big one.
Yeah, timing, yeah, timing is a big one.
Can the planning board members see it?
Excuse me?
Can the planning board members have the report?
I think it's a draft right now. Well, let's get the, let's get, let the Task Force, the chair of the Task Force and Mark get the corrections made. There's no sense in sending out something to the public that's, that's got obvious errors.
May I ask a question, Sue? In your, in all your public forums, what has been the, on the negative side, why shouldn't we do this? What's?
No, no one says that.
No one says that?
No, no.
Nobody's for it?
Absolutely.
Look at that, you guys.
Um, there are lots of reasons. I would say people run the gamut the whole way. I mean, you've got people on this end who want to have housing through the entire town and have all these clusters of multifamily housing everywhere in every neighborhood. Why haven't we done that yet? That's one end. And the other end is put a piece of bubble wrap over our town and do not change one thing. Not one thing in any issue, you know, whether you're talking about a road sign or the name of a road or, or heaven forbid, you know, someone tears down their home and builds something they don't like. I mean, you've just got one end to the other on the spectrum. Most people are in the middle. And people who, you know, take the time to really understand the facts of it say they don't like it. They don't like that the state wrote this law, that the planning board didn't write it, that the Select Board didn't write it, you know, that we're having to comply with a law that we don't love. Most people, once they get over that, they think we, our plan is good. You know, they like our plan. They like what we thought about and coming up with the plan. And are, I say, either enthusiastically supportive or reluctantly supportive.
What about the design?
Comfortably supportive.
Yeah.
What about design standards? Has that been understood yet, do you think?
No. I mean, and we need to do a better job of explaining it. I myself don't do a good job of explaining it. But I think people are interested in that. When they think of design standards, they think immediately like Man Tuckett, you know, and they don't want that. So.
Okay, we need to figure out how to convey that. Okay, we do have two specific things that I want to talk about tonight.
Can I ask more on the MBTA? Have we heard back from the state on the bylaw? Today was the deadline.
So, yeah, I think it's tomorrow, the next day. I counted it up. But I'm hoping that by the end of the week, I would have heard from the state and be able to make some adjustments, schedule a joint meeting with the Task Force and the Planning Board so that we can review it. Once we review it and the Planning Board votes to submit it, I can post a public hearing because I have to file that version with the clerk. So that's kind of the steps. So hopefully, that can happen rather quickly so that we can, so we may have to try and have a meeting as soon as, sorry, as soon as possible.
The answer is no, we have not heard.
And then my second question is Thursday night, a joint Planning Board Task Force meeting, you said that you were presenting, and I know you're not on the Task Force, so.
Well, we're, we still, the thought was that we each have a planning board person present. So sort of a, I think the communications group will meet Thursday morning and finalize the actual present, present sequence.
So it's not a joint meeting?
It can be, we should probably go as a joint meeting.
But the only problem then is do we need a quorum of each to go forward with the public forum?
No, where is, where is its public forum? We do not really have to post it for a Planning Board meeting if people show up.
Right, we're not making any decisions.
We're not making any decisions. We're not reviewing the bylaw. You're presenting it as we did Saturday.
Okay.
The Task Force is presenting it to the public. Any of the selectmen were there. They didn't post it as a Select Board meeting because they're not presenting their case.
Okay, so let's post it as a forum, not as a joint meeting. But certainly, people are encouraged to come.
Yeah.
And we'll be here, it will be here, but we're virtual.
Or you can just tune in, yeah.
Okay, good.
So can I, I'm just trying to clarify. Is this still in the Task Force hands? Or is it back in the Planning Board's hands?
Well, putting on this forum is the Task Force, our sub, our communications subcommittee.
So the communications subcommittee is doing a hearing? Public forum, I'm sorry.
Public forum.
Public forum. Okay.
Not okay? You don't want us to do one?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to figure out the timeline. So again, when does it come then to the Planning Board? Because I'm still.
Okay, so let me, I'm about to talk about the, on the, I will, we will talk about the calendar in a minute, about the meetings that we have to, have to do to get this thing to November 18th. So before we do that, there's one other thing I want to talk about because it's part of the whole. And that is, we asked, there were three issues identified by Emily that should be addressed as part of the package going to the voters. So in your packet, you saw advice from Jonathan Murray about those three items. And they were the preamble to the zoning about the quantum of vote, modifications to the definitions, and then modifications to the marijuana restrictions in the LCD. And he drafted some draft bylaw language. But then I asked him, we also advised that the preamble would need two-thirds and was not essential for the MBTA zoning. And that the marijuana was not essential to the MBTA zoning, although it might be politically important, but would need a two-thirds vote. And the third one, definitions, he was, said it could be separate. But then subsequently, I asked him if those definitions were referenced in the bylaw. Could we have the article, one article, that added a new section and modified the definition? And I believe he said yes. So let's take the last one first. I would strongly suggest that we include the modifications to definitions in the article with the MBTA. We have one article that has all of the things and then have a 50% vote. And thus, it will be part of the hearing when we do that. Does that make sense?
That does make sense, yeah.
Okay. The second suggestion is that we table and put in on our future many things of zoning that are not quite accurate with state law, but don't jeopardize MBTA. And that's the preamble. So that's the, and then the third one, if that makes sense to people, just because we want to reduce, and it's a preamble if it's a kind of a procedural thing. It seems like it'd be very easy to do at the annual meeting. It's just making our preamble comply with state law. And I think we could probably come up with a whole bunch of things that, that do that. So that seems to me, we table that one. And then the third one is the marijuana one. And the reason this is important is we, this is definitely a separate article. And it needs to have a hearing. And if it is going to be on the November 18th town meeting. So Sue, can you summarize, I can pull it up, but summarize the issue or mark on marijuana? You're doing a bit of entertainment, I can pull it up. Sort of ask you.
I think the problem is, is that the current bylaw says no marijuana within 500 feet of a residence or something. And now we're, we're creating a residential, potentially residential.
In the LCD.
In the LCD.
Then, this was before I joined the Planning Board. But the LCD is the only place realistically marijuana can be.
Now, does, does the bylaw, one second, does the bylaw say residence or residential means zoning property?
It says residence.
If it says residence, then clearly no building is going to, residential construction is going to occur before the springtime. So I think, you know, you can put that off until the spring to give us plenty of time to discuss how to adjust it.
I guess the question is, does it help section O yet?
I guess, to me, it just, I don't even know why it's necessary. I mean, if we're saying an overlay district is a residential district, why do we have to be redundant and call out Beaver Dam Road? Because our current bylaw says no marijuana, I think, no marijuana business shall be located within 300 feet of a residential zoning district. So an overlay, an MBTA overlay is a residential zoning district.
Yeah, and to your point, there are lots of other places in the LCD that are not within, in the, that are more than 300 feet away. So it's not precluding the possibility.
No. It was just, it's, you know, we've already stipulated residential.
Could be in the MAC or something.
Okay. You are correct. No marijuana business shall be located within 300 feet of a residential zoning district or within 500 feet of any lot containing a school, childcare facility, lowland playground. Will be the MAC, actually.
What was the thinking behind amending it then?
I know, it had come up in the.
It must have been a reason.
It must have been a reason. I know it had been brought up in public comment.
I think it was a potential conflict, potential conflict.
Potential conflict. Okay, so for the, I would like to ask, let's see. Just pulling up the document. Uh, nowhere, um, no rare, he suggests no marijuana business shall be located within. Um, nowhere, um, no rare, he suggests no marijuana business shall be located within 300 feet of a residential zoning district, including Beaver Dam sub-district of the community housing overlay district. It's redundant.
Yeah.
Sarah, did our current bylaw say 300 feet for residential and school childcare facility?
It says, uh, within 300, 100 feet or within 500 feet of any lot containing a school, childcare facility or playground.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so where, I think we're, are we all in agreement that we would table this as well?
I just don't think we need it.
Don't think we need it. Okay, well, why don't I circle back with him and clarify that the overlay district is residential. The other thing he asked, which I think is, um, not at all concerning, is that were we limiting marijuana altogether in town therefore? And the answer to that is absolutely no, because there are other areas in the LCD that are well within, beyond 40. And then there are other, there's the Gordon parcel is all LCD, so.
Is the marijuana the whole LCD or just the right or left of schools, just that area?
It's a whole LCD, but I'm not sure. Uh, marijuana businesses may be allowed by special permit in a limited commercial district such as the zoning, this zoning bylaw requires that order how to applicable state laws. Okay, so that's good. We can take those off of our, um, plate, all three of those. Um, so that does, uh, help our, just a little bit our schedule. So, um.
Who did the definitions?
I asked, uh, the definition, I think, came from Emily.
Yes.
Um, and then I asked Jonathan just to put them in a article.
So I just have some questions with some of them.
Why don't we save those until we are actually finalizing the zoning?
Actually, if you could email them to me, that would be helpful.
So, yeah, everybody can look at.
Then I can follow it, I can look at it.
Okay, um, so now we come to our schedule, which is quite, and sort of, um, we have upcoming meetings here. Um, the 15th is actually our next meeting because we have five, depending on the way the calendar falls, um, October.
And then CST.
Well, I, uh, no, October 1st is a Tuesday, that's my problem. Um, October 1st is a Tuesday, and so the first Monday is October 7th. And then October 14th is a Monday holiday, so our next scheduled, regular scheduled meeting is October 15th. And we really need to kind of, try to have some time with CST on that meeting. Um, assuming that the HLC gets back to us this week, then we need, uh, what I propose is actually kind of a working session of the task force members and anybody who wants to come to kind of work through the proposed changes. You know, kind of, like, the head, you know, HLC suggests this or requires this. You know, somebody's given us input on this tweaking, hopefully they will be tweaks. But a working session, depending on when this stuff comes back from those, mostly task force probably, but anybody wants to come because we don't want to be, we want to include everybody at this point. Monday, the 30th or Thursday, October 3rd. I can, I can.
I think Thursday, October 3rd.
What?
Thursday, October 3rd.
I won't be available, but that's okay. I mean, I can give someone my thoughts.
I think also, um, it sort of depends when HLC comes back to us.
Yeah, I'm just assuming it would be the end of the week.
That's Russia, Sean, that makes any difference.
Which is, Thursday is?
I guess for the 2nd, there was, yeah, Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so this is a little tentative, these are tentative right now, um, I can.
What about, which is, which people make Monday, the 30th?
Yeah, Monday, the 30th, if we have something from HLC at the first.
Yeah, yeah, and I'd have to recommend, I'd have to recommend edits.
Yeah, and we have to post it on Thursday. Right.
Yeah, and get it in the packet for you Friday.
Right. So I put it up on the screen here so you can see it. Um, my, this is proposed, I think everything is subject to when we get stuff back.
Right.
Um, the issue is that, I guess the reason to do it on the 30th, the big reason is that on October 2nd, we need to post for the October 28th hearing.
And we have to have what we're going to be discussing.
And when, and we need to have a final packet.
You, you have to vote, planning board has to vote to hold a hearing on a particular document because that has to get filed. You can make changes after the hearing, at the hearing.
They can make changes, so.
Yeah, it's me.
However, that document needs to get filed with the clerk, the one that's being advertised. So that's why having the board kind of give a final blessing of that amended document, however it gets amended. Um, so that when you do the hearing, it's minor adjustments.
So you need a formal meeting of the planning board before October 7th, right?
I have a. That's a, right.
What about Tuesday, October 1st? I mean, that's one additional.
I can't do that, but people could do it. I mean, it's fine. Um, I think you're going to have to be, I think right now, we're going to have to be a little bit flexible and see where we are on Wednesday.
Right.
And see, I know that all these meetings may not be convenient for people. We're kind of up against it with the, because, um, and because our cricket deadline is three, is essentially three weeks, even though the posting is effectively two weeks, you have to get it in.
Would it be at night on the 3rd?
I think it could.
Because I, I could do that. I could come back earlier.
Yeah. So, um, you're gonna, I think we're gonna, this, this one is going to have to be TBD.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, Gail, posting is going to have to happen on October 1st. Um, October 15th is the planning board meeting for cell signaling. Um, and then October 28th is, I know some people are away, various meetings here. Um, um, for the public hearing. And the warrant closes the following Monday.
So if we want to make changes per resident input from the hearing.
We have to do it that night.
We would have to meet that week.
Meet that week or, or do it that night, or do it Monday, the 4th, before the select board meeting.
Why aren't we having a hearing, um, sooner?
Because we don't have the here, we don't have the material back from HLC to look at my, look up on the screen.
No, I'm looking at it.
Oh, you, oh, oh, right. Uh, you're looking at the screen. Um, so we won't have the material back from HLC. You'd have to meet, have to get the material back from HLC on Wednesday, meet on Thursday this week, which means we need to post it tomorrow morning.
So I guess it kind of gets back to my point from last meeting is that if we, if you don't get this back in a timely manner from EO HLC, jamming it through may not be to our best interest. Um, you know, it's worth a try, but I think, you know, this is exactly what we talked about prior, saying we might just not have time. And it's looking, if we don't get it within the next day or two, which the deadline was, if they don't meet their deadline, we just don't have time.
Well, we'll take that up certainly as, as, as the, let's cross that bridge and we get to it.
So we can hold the meeting, not a hearing, hold the meeting once we get comments back from the state and put, vote, place that article on the warrant. And subsequently, let's say, the first week or two of November, hold the public hearing.
That's true.
And, you know, if there are some sort of changes, you could amend it on the floor, which you don't really want to do, but I think, once we, if we have the comments back from the state and everybody, and we review them and we vote to send it, to place it on the warrant, I don't think we're going to really be making changes based on public hearing, you know, um, so.
Sometimes you get, you know, people read these things carefully and we want to give the, um, opportunity for people to read carefully and to make, you know, important or minor important, you know, changes that, so. Let's see.
And also just to be heard, maybe.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is, um, the best we can do for planning right now, I think. Um, Mark does make a point, and Sue, I think Mary makes a good point as well, that certainly the, the, what Mark is suggesting is less than ideal.
It's ideal, but it does meet the legal requirements.
It does meet the legal, um, requirements, but we'd like to, and we have had many opportunities for people to have input, but, um, I think we would like to do better than that.
Mark, have you heard anything from Emily or any of your colleagues in the industry about, uh, other towns receiving their submissions back?
So, a, a batch of the comments were supposed to be coming out last week and this week. So it seems that many communities kind of submitted around the same time we did, kind of the middle to the end of June last year, so, um, that's all I've heard.
Okay, thanks.
Nothing directly from EO HLC.
Okay. Anything else on MBTA task force?
I would just, um, Peter actually notified me Saturday. He had seen that the court hearing for Milton is on October 7th. And I was looking at the information on the court's website, and you can actually watch it virtually. If anybody wants to do that, it's at 9:00 AM on the 7th.
Wow, wow. Yeah, interesting. Um, okay.
You want to hear something interesting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hear through the grapevine that the town of Wenham might be postponing their special time meeting that's coming up to vote on this. Interesting. Hold on, Chris.
Oh, the other, um, thing on dates, it's not a meeting, but since we're talking about dates. Um, I believe that there is a memorial for Ron, um, currently, uh, I believe scheduled for Friday, October, why does it say October 28th? Um, the week, the Friday before October, um, October 25th at 2:00 PM. I will, when I get, um, specific information, I will let you know. I believe it's, at the Legion, but, um, uh, the 25th, that too, is my understanding. And there is also, um, a move to, uh, identify a place for a longevity bench in his honor memory. Um, okay, the last thing before we do minutes, um, is a number of you, and over time, we have, um, in almost every meeting, we identify things that we should do in the future. And so I started, um, a list, um, and I'm going to put it in the meeting, um, folder, um, under future meetings. So right now, um, this is what it looks like, and I guess I'm going to ask, I'll put some sort of instructions here for people to feel free to put things in it and initial them, so as you have ideas. Um, and then we can kind of, um, when we get through this November 28th, um, meeting, um, we can take some time to see which of these things are our priorities. So, you know, ADU floodplain bylaw has come up for a springtown meeting, future, um, and it could also be springtown meeting, if just not today, future means beyond today. Senior housing, master plan review, downhought comprehensive plans, senior road bylaw, I added that tonight, um, and things with the select board, um, that come up. So I thought it would be useful to, in our meetings folder, to have this as a future meetings document, um, that's just there and people can add to it and then we can refer to it. So hopefully that helps us to not lose too much track of things that we talk about. We can keep it open in, in meetings, add to it. Gail, maybe as you hear us say things, you should also feel free to put things in there. Greg, anybody, you know, things that we should tackle, it doesn't mean we will, but at least we, um, can keep a list of things that we would like to, uh, to see us do. So hopefully that's going to be helpful. Um, any, uh, public, uh, unshare here, um, any public comment? Okay, um, hearing none. Um, approval of minutes of July 22nd, um, people have a chance, hopefully look at those.
I want to approve them.
Uh, I, both of them? Why don't you take one at a time? July 22nd, because not everybody, um, Gail, can everybody vote on July 22nd?
I'll clear that up. I'm not sure. I'll make sure that no one goes, if they were there.
I'll, well, not present was Peter Morton. Um, so Peter cannot, so I will take them separately. Sue has moved, um, to approve the minutes of July 22nd. Do I have a second?
Uh, can I amend that one?
Uh, you may sec, second it first.
Oh, second it, okay.
Okay, then, do you suggest amendments, please?
So the amendment is, I think this is one that mentions that Mark Glofsky has been a resident of town for 40 years. In fact, he's never been a resident of Manchester, as far as I know. And it was a woman from overseas who had.
On August 12th.
On August 12th, I'm sorry. I'll rescind the motion.
You already moved it. Okay, so any other discussion on the 22nd? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Yes.
Fine, except for Peter is abstaining.
I'm abstaining, I didn't.
Okay, and Mary is abstaining. Any, um, votes no? Okay, thank you. Uh, two abstentions and, uh, five yeses. Okay, the, um, minutes of, um, 8:12, is that right?
So Chris, I think Gail recorded that correctly, even if that woman made a misstatement. So I think technically.
Well, I, uh.
The minutes are correct.
I think the minute says that Mark Glofsky has been a resident of the town for 40 years.
But did she attribute that statement to the woman who called from Switzerland?
I don't think so.
No, it does, uh, he, that, the, Chris is correct. Mark Glofsky, CST lawyer, stated he had lived in town for 40 years and, um.
I, I think it was, he was resident 40 years ago.
No, no, that was the woman from overseas who had.
No, I think that was Mark Glofsky's statement too, because I wrote it down and listened to it.
I don't think Mark has ever lived in town, but.
It's not an essential element of the minute.
He claimed, he claimed that he did 40 years ago.
I think that, I think.
It's not an essential element of the minute.
Am I wrong?
Say that again?
It's not an essential element of the minute. She can't strike it.
Okay, okay, we can strike it, um, in either case. Um, and, um, this one, um, everyone can vote. Um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 12th with the striking how long Mark Glofsky did or didn't live in the man.
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Peter Morton, second. Any other discussion? Um, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstaining.
Okay, Mary is abstaining, thank you. Um, any other business tonight?
I just had a quick question. We had in our folder last meeting, um, a memo from Weston and Sampson, regarding initial construction observation services. We never discussed that. Are we going to discuss that at the next hearing?
Uh, at the last meeting, we also discussed, um, the memo from, uh, Public Works that Chuck and Nate sent, saying that they were, um, yeah, I don't want to discuss too much about CST, but there was a memo, I think I forwarded to the fire board, uh, where, uh, they said that Chuck and Nate said that they were, they felt that that would be sufficient, that CST submitting the reports from the engineers and that they would, um, also do some additional inspection, particularly on the water consumer lines.
So I think we can't really discuss that right now, but can I ask Gordon as the construction professional to look at those two correspondence and?
I did, I was going to say my.
Well, okay, so give us a.
A hall of my opinion there.
Okay, um, yeah, so can you circle back? I, I put it on a list. Great, thank you, Mary, for raising it. Alora?
Are you set? Procedural thing, um, if there are changes from documents, especially significant. Procedural thing, if there are changes from documents, especially significant documents like orders of condition between end of day Friday, whatever that means, and Monday, if we could just get printouts on Monday, if anything is substantively changed at the meeting, that'd be helpful because for sure, I'm not going to be able to routinely check things on Monday and put them out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think I put in the, the draft documents that were a little different than the ones from the previous meeting, like Friday afternoon.
We can try to get things out.
I understand, and sometimes late breaking things come out, so we have to go off on a Monday, but oh, you know, if we have a printout here, then, yep.
The other thing.
I just haven't read it, the changes.
Often some of us have a printout, if we just have the code, we can make the copies. It's a great suggestion, thank you. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Close.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, thank you, everybody.